The August nineteenth Ellis County Commission meeting, all those capable please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Constitution Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liquidateable, as is for all.
Bobby Cole, roll please.
Commissioner Neil Younger.
President.
Chair Michael Burgess.
Here.
Commissioner Nathan Liker.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I don't believe there's any changes to the order of business, pretty straightforward today. Prior minutes, any changes or modifications needed there?
No.
I have none.
Consent agenda.
I'll move.
Oh, go ahead.
I'll move to approve consent agenda items A through G.
I'll second that.
Motion is second on consent agenda, any comments or changes or recommendations? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No opposed, passes three zero. Issues from persons from public not on the order agenda, we've got a couple of items, if you're here for those items, you can speak then, but otherwise, we're good. Monthly department report, any comments from the commission?
Yeah, I'd like to highlight a couple of things here. One, I know IT's had a long couple of weeks, but they really, they've changed their report and it looks really nice for their monthly departmental report, a lot of activity that you see them doing that we don't normally see or get a rundown on. They're always working kinda in the dark on us. And then two, our EMS is still running at, you know, ten, eleven runs a day. And three, our sheriff, our jail is back up to capacity pretty much again. And I got a couple of items from the sheriff, we've got pretty much three road deputy, or three deputies on the road at all times. If you look through the report, the amount of calls, incidents, things that they do, little over eighteen hundred items that they do a month. And that's divided up between eleven deputies that are on the road doing it, it's a lot of, lot of different calls, different variations, so hats off to them this month.
I'll add just a little bit of that, you know, when you get out in the country and you see our departments like that doing it, you know, they're out and keeping our place safe, so they're definitely doing their job, appreciate it.
Next item, twenty twenty-six budget publication authorization, Darren.
For commissioners, Darren Myers, county administrator. The next step in the budget process is to authorize the county clerk to publish the budget as you've worked on for the last six months or so. The last two attachments to the budget are the two documents that Bobby will put in the paper, I think she said this Sunday, is the goal to get them online. The final pieces to the budget, the final, little different changes and everything, but the total expenditures for the general fund is thirty-four point seven seven million dollars. Solid waste fund is one point five seven six million, and as a reminder, the solid waste fund is not taxpayer money, that is enterprise fund, which all the revenues and expenses are, all the revenues are collected from people that are using the facility out there, dumping their trash and shingles, trees, municipal waste, construction demolition, all that. And then the fire district is eight hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. Each are slight increase over the last year based on different reasons that the commission is well aware, since we've been spending about six months on this budget. And like I said, the last piece is just to put it all together, it's in the spreadsheets and the documents are attached for the, to be published in the paper. And then on the September ninth commission meeting, hopefully, fingers crossed that we're back in the admin building in your commission chambers. That'll be the R and R hearing and the, the R and R hearing as well as the public hearing, which are combined at that point. That's the final step to the budget process, at least for us. Any questions?
For the publication, each of these budgeted pages are published, or what's published in the publication?
Just these last two, yeah, if we had to publish this whole thing, it'd be a hundred thousand dollars. Sorry, it's not as easy to use this as we are at our building. This is the, the main budget hearing sheet for the general fund, it has several years worth of budget information. Our debt, all of our different separate funds that are required by audit, that are outside the general fund that we spend money on. A whole bunch of non-budgeted funds, there's, for each of those tabs there, there's four, so there's sixteen more funds there that we have funds in, that were planned expenditures. This goes into our debt, as you can see, our debt is decreasing, primarily that debt is for, the majority of that debt is for public works equipment that they lease, purchase every year. And that does, has decreased, and then this one separate here, on a different format, but that's the simpler one for the fire district. So those two get shrunk down a little bit for cost effectiveness to be put in the paper.
Well, is there anybody in the public that wants to speak on the budget? Ready to move forward, I'm gonna move to approve the final draft of the twenty twenty-six budgets and authorize the county clerk to publish for the public hearing scheduled on September ninth, twenty twenty-five at eight thirty a.m.
I'll second that.
Got a motion is second, any further comments, discussion? Another question on the publication, it'll be notified that that hearing is in our county chambers, because the letter says it is, but will this publication also?
Says it right here at the very top.
Okay.
And it's also in the R and R mailers as well.
Yep. So we will be there.
I guess just as a heads up, the, we will not have to tear out the commission dais unless something changes. If the commission wants to look at it, we're gonna head down there again after the meeting, but probably won't have carpet, the sheetrock may, or sheetrock will be done and may be painted, not sure about the carpet. If anything, we'll have folding chairs set up, and then we'll talk to the contractor to put a protection paper across the floor, just to kinda make it so it's not as dirty down there. So yeah, the, we should still be able to have the meeting down there, it won't look as nice as usual.
Got a motion is second on the table, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No opposed, passes three zero. City of Ellis grant, letter of support. We've signed this before, so Verta Flynn got ahold of me from the Assistant City Clerk of the City of Ellis. They had applied for a KDOT cost share grant for Second Street, I believe it is, yeah, West Second Street project. They were not awarded the grant on the last cycle, they're reapplying for the fall grant cycle and asked if the county commission would sign a letter of support. Again, we've, we've signed it before, it's no obligation financially for the county, it's just a support that we think it's a good project for the city.
I'm good with that.
Good with that, that is right, that's a good way to say it.
Motion, no motion is needed, I guess, so we got this letter, we'll sign it, and we'll move on to the next topic. Subdevelopment road discussion continuation. We've been working through several topics on subdevelopment roads and the management of those roads, the condition of those roads, what types of roads we have as far as sand or mix or asphalt or chip and seal or whatever. So we got a list now from Brendan of the subdevelopments, what they currently have, kind of the condition that Brendan's put them as a priority, and then we also have a discussion on on just the minimum road standards and changes that may be needed or additions or those things. I'll kinda open it up at this point for either commission to make any comments on that, and we'll bring Brendan up to discuss his work that he's been doing.
I'd like to say, I'd like to start by, I appreciate what Brendan's provided here, it gives us one, it puts a lot of things in perspective. Roads, what we have, he gave a lot of definitions, and it also stated kinda how the office or his department handles roads and maintenance and so on and so forth, so having that for at least something that we can show the public, that way when they call, they ask, they have questions, we have documentation of, okay, this is, this is how we're doing it. It also holds their feet to the fire that if we're not, you know, abiding by that, they can go, well, it's not, it's not reaching it. Then we'd have some pushback, I guess, on Brendan's department's behalf of where it's at, or it falls on our lap, so I do, I do like everything that he's provided here, so thank you Brendan.
Brendan, you wanna come up and talk to us, but talk to the public as well as of what we're kinda looking at?
While we're on this, only thing I did not see in there, and you know, and probably everybody in here, sometimes it is not doable on some of these great big rock hills, so I don't know if we can incorporate something in, because you know as well as I do, if we try to build that and, you know, the public sees that, that there may have to be a little bit of altercation when we do the, you know, the rock hills where you just can't, can't do it. And there's not a whole lot of the areas, but I just, if you had any ideas to put in.
No, and I, I had thought about that, the issue is the document just gets so lengthy and wordy that people overlook things, so we wanted to keep it short, sweet, simple. That's why there's words that are in there that were highlighted or bolded, because the first attachment was the minimum road standards for what a new road construction would be for development, or if we were going to build a brand new roadway. That's the ideal case, that's what we would choose for, for a new development, or if we were building a road that was not there. In there, it even does talk about working with what's existing, that there will be changes, that this is the guide, but it's not the end all be all. Same thing with the minimum standards, this is a guide to follow, but it doesn't have to be black and white, because it's, we're dealing with mother nature. Ideally, you work roads with moisture, it says that in there, sometimes we don't have the moisture to work with, so then you perform different activities, but the blade still does go across. Usually that's when they're clipping shoulders. There's a topic about that, but trying to keep it concise and legible or readable is why it was like this. I mean, I can add stuff in there, there's so many different one-off scenarios or short scenarios, I didn't feel that that was important to add in here. This was more for, like, the developments themselves, developments, most cases don't have those large rock hills. The only one that would, which doesn't right now, would be Stonewood Estates North or Limestone Acres, the only ones that have any true real elevation changes throughout the development. And to Little Creek Estates, to an extent, that's, was farm ground before, so there's not the rock ledges that we would find. It can be added in if that's what the commission decides, but we're trying to keep this readable and we could make a eighty-page document, but people won't take the time to look over that, six to eight-page document, people will look through.
I counted, I got twenty, essentially identified twenty-one subdivisions.
Twenty-one individualized developments.
Okay.
In Ellis County that were responsible for maintenance of.
Okay.
And so that priority, high, medium, low, does not mean it's high overall, it just means in comparison to the other developments, it is a higher priority.
Okay. Which looks like we have essentially two of those at this point, Liker addition and Prairie Acres.
Yeah, in comparison to the other nineteen developments, those ones are the ones, if we were to do improvements to, would be the ones that my office, myself, would recommend tackling first.
How do we, at this point, kinda see tackling, do we take, let's say we got twenty-one divisions and we say, you know, over the next seven years, we could do three of these divisions, if we were to look at it that way, of just kinda putting them in priority and doing the three highest priorities each year, or?
I'd recommend one to two a year.
Okay.
Because it will take away from upgrades to, or repairs to our major roads. Like Prairie Acres is a high priority, we get very few calls about issues in that development, in comparison. But it doesn't mean that their issues aren't more severe than the offices, the developments that call us more frequently, it's just based on the area and how it is, this is what my office would recommend tackling first, because the age of it, it's already been fully built out. So improvements we make to the road system will stay. Like the, we've looked at chip sealing, some of the developments have had, been asked to run numbers on them. If it's a brand-new development that's built out, I would be very hesitant to put a chip seal on the road because of the truck traffic to deliver all the equipment there and supplies to shape the lots, could tear through that surface. But a development like this, that's already built up, if they wanted a chip seal, there's no new develop, new homes going in there, it's just residential traffic. A seal coat can support that level of traffic on there, but it would take us doing some shaping and regrading of the roadways to be able to have a good base to put that seal coat layer on. That's why the fix is pulling the shoulders, reshaping, creating the drainage, replacing culverts, adding culverts where there was none to begin with. Because there was no drainage study, to my knowledge, when this development was built, it's very low line, it's very flat. And that pulling shoulders is a point of contention, that's where my office gets called the most on, is when we cut the grass by blading it and working it in. We get frequent calls and complaints that we've destroyed lawns. It's still within the right of way, it's what's necessary to fix the road and make the road better, but there will be pushback, we'll never make everyone happy, even if we make it black, or make a concrete road out of it.
How do we prioritize, so some of these developments, like Prairie Acres, have, you know, lots and lots of little roads and pieces apart, and some of the developments, of course, only have, a few here and there, which we could essentially do more of those, I would assume, quicker, we could do three or four additions that only have a few roads within them.
Potentially, but then.
And where some of the additions may take us essentially all, all year if we really wanted to improve it, because there's just so many little outlandish roads and pieces, so.
And that's where you can kinda combine some of the smaller ones together in an extent, and we also have to look at where's our nearest source for fill material to build the road out. Because a lot of these will take outside material than what's existing alongside the roadway, just to shape the road before any aggregate is applied on the surface for a surface where it stays a sand road or turn, change to a mixed up road, or an asphalt road, a concrete road. A lot of these ones that are higher priority need outside material brought in to truly shape the road to make a good road base.
Did you take into account on these roads, like, right of way, are we, do we have sufficient right of way to go in and fix, make some of these fixes?
A lot of these developments, most of these developments, the roads were created at a time when the statute changed to be sixty feet of right of way minimum, and we can work with that in most cases.
Okay.
There's a few outlined ones where additional may be needed, but usually it's just a temporary construction easement. Where we'd get off right of way to create a waterway, or create an area for the water to go, or to cut back a slope so it doesn't force more water towards the roadway to establish a fire ditch. Those are pretty few and far between, because most of these developments are low line and flat. Most of them, we do have some that are built on section line roads, but Liker addition is not a true addition, that was just lot split, looking through all the records. That is a section line road, two hundred and eightieth. Liker Road itself is sixty or sixty-six feet, as well as two hundred and eighty-fifth is sixty or sixty-six feet, but two hundred and eighth itself is forty feet wide. It is very hard to establish a good road in only forty feet of right of way, it can be done, but you will not have drainage. Which, in a sense, make it, makes it not a good road.
Gotcha, which is why it's below.
Below the field.
Mm-hmm.
You have utilities on both sides, you've got power line that's outside the right of way on the east side of the road, on the west side of the road. You have fiber and telecom that appear to be within the right of way, without having a survey, I couldn't tell you for sure. And then there is, appears to also to be rural water district running parallel with the roadway outside the right of way, so any improvements to the west of two hundred and eightieth, we would impact their easement or their water line and would likely be asked or required to replace water line along that stretch and acquire new easement for them. If you just put a foot of rock or two feet of rock on that whole roadway and get the road higher than the field, that's great, but the water then has to go somewhere. And all those entrances would have, would need entrance culverts. There's considerable cost to consider about that too, not just what the area is gonna.
Where's the, which direction does water go north or south there?
Yes.
Both.
There's a waterway to the west.
Right.
Even with Liker Road where we have a crossroad pipe. Looking at it, that's where we believe the water should go through and make its way down to Victoria Road or Thirteenth Street. But being very flat in that area, water doesn't go, it does seep away from there, but everything that falls on the east side of the road doesn't make it to that crossroad pipe a lot, it just soaks in through the ground there. And if you build the road up, you could get away with not putting those crossroads or the entrance pipes in, but then you may have mosquito ponds forming if we get considerable rainfalls, until it soaks away. And I don't know if the residents would like a wa, wet area at the front of their properties, that they mow or have kids play in.
I guess, it, it could be done.
Yes, everything can be done.
It's gonna be, it'll be a tough thing.
Very time consuming, yes.
Yeah.
Time consuming and costly with the utilities on this, that two hundred and eighty stretch. Potentially costly utility relocation. I don't know exactly where that right of way, or the water line is, but in past, how we found it is, it is right on the backside of our right of way is where their easement starts. Because their easement's generally fifteen feet either side of where their line lies. So they're usually fifteen feet off the edge of our right of way, so any work we do, they've been, they've asked the county that goes outside of our easement and impacts theirs to acquire them a new easement and replace the line in that area.
And that would be, to be determined to
Correct.
To see where that is, so, I mean, so we could help those people out, out there a little bit, yeah. Like I said, I haven't been out there in a heavy rain, which way, like Nate had said, which way is it going, but.
Doesn't.
It, it's too flat, it, it's like all of them, they're all built down in the, but I guess we have to do something if we can, so I don't know who the lucky guy's gonna be to go out and we get our project manager, same with Prairie Acres, same with all of them, to tell them what we're gonna do, but.
Our IT director's lived out there since he was a kid, and that road has always been a sore spot. It's not something that just happened, now that there's a couple homes out there, it's been an issue probably since its inception. That's why that road stayed forty foot right of way when a lot of the neighboring roads were increased right of way back in the forties, fifties, and sixties.
But that's why we decided to bring some of this stuff up, it's just because it's been, doesn't mean it needs to say.
Yeah. One on the top of the page now.
Yeah. That's a, is that a full mile from Thirteenth Street up?
Half a mile roughly.
It's a half. Okay.
And the east side is, would, would cost us dramatically a lot with that power line.
Good, usually those power lines are on or one foot outside of the right of ways, how those are installed, just because they don't want to have to replace them if we make a road improvement. So the telecom and the fiber, that one would potentially be no cost, because that appears to be in the right of way. But there are, to the north, I saw two markers for rural water where it crossed the road, so it's coming up somewhere in that field, most likely parallel with two hundred and eighth Avenue. Where it crosses the roadway, we wouldn't be responsible for replacing that, but outside of the right of way, if we impact that easement at all, it will do compensation to replace line and relocate.
On your maps, there, just so I'm clear on that, the red lines just denote
Properties.
Property.
Yep, this, so this is just, I left the parcel layers on for the properties.
Okay.
So the area between them is generally the right of way, but this isn't the official right of way, the official right of way is recorded in the road record book, but this just gives a, at a glance, an idea of what the right of way should, could be, and then you go through the road records and filing at the deeds office to determine official right of way. That's why this two hundred and eighth looks like it narrows up, the right of way doesn't narrow there, it's still forty feet through that whole stretch. It just isn't, potentially an error or how it was drawn in. Because it's trying to approximate a curve on a flat map, so.
Yeah.
You find areas like that. And you can see in the northeast part there, that was actually redevelopment, so you can see two hundred and eighty-fifth, north of Liker Road is actually wider than two hundred and eighty-fifth going back down. Because that was done as part of a replat, they gave additional right of way in there. With a forty-foot right of way, on unpaved road, it's generally twenty-six, twenty-four to twenty-eight feet wide. We ideally try and keep it around twenty-four, so now you're left with twelve to sixteen feet for slopes, ditches, bottoms and back slopes. That's not much room to be able to control water, especially in a flat area. Because you need more capacity in the flatter area to hold the water so it can go to its drain points.
Well, I'm just looking at that property and knowing the property that's there, there's, there's low, there's obvious low spots, but there's, there's spots that are, probably wouldn't need very much. I guess we can maybe look at that and see if there's, if it's needing an earthen drainage system, or if we need to, I mean, there, there would probably be other opportunities for different systems to be utilized.
Yeah, biggest thing is trying to connect it to that waterway that's shown there on the map.
Right.
That's where the water is trying to go to, some does break north to an extent, to try and get to interstate, but it's built up there at the right of way line with the state, so
Right.
It could sit there and not actually get away.
Gotcha. So that's something we probably need to, if we're gonna go do improvements, I mean, you did a huge overview for all these properties, but if we're gonna zone in on that, then we need to probably do a way, get some engineering involved in it.
Correct.
To do it properly.
Yep.
Okay.
So this was all done with no additional cost to the county.
Correct.
Just to see where we're at.
This gives us a great overview of every development.
And then because there are so many developments, I need input from the commission for which ones first, which one's second, so we're not accused of favoritism at my office. Before I spent money to contract with surveyors and engineers to look at redesigns.
Got it.
Especially if the project's not gonna be till ten years out, or the development doesn't even want it, they're happy with what they have.
Got it.
We were on our road tour, we all seen, there could be some culverts added, is there any record when the last upgrading was done out there as far?
We had a new material last year.
Okay.
We raised up a portion of the roadway.
Okay, how about the ditches though, nothing was done?
We did some touching the ditches, but with that narrow, we.
Right.
I mean, I can make one heck of a one-lane road there, but then, if there's no other roadway out, there's.
So I'm gonna go back, refer back to the kinda standards of maintenance document under drainage and such. Would that, so with culverts and stuff, if they're properly sized and not clogged? How do we do that now, because I mean, we're fairly strapped, but there's, we've all driven the roads, we know there's plenty of culverts where they're
Partially plugged.
Partially clogged, clogged, collapsed, smashed, you know, rusted.
Yep.
I mean, it doesn't take a lot to drive around and find them, so.
Correct, because there are thousands of them out there.
Right.
So that, that's the reason why we require a minimum an eighteen-inch culvert.
Okay.
The drainage area may not require an eighteen-inch, but if we put anything smaller in there, the length of it, you have reduced flow then, it will seal it in in no time. the length of it, you have reduced flow then, it will seal it in in no time, and then we don't really have a chance with our current equipment to clean that out, we don't have a back truck or back trailer. Try and jet out plugged culverts, all we can do is clear out the ends and try and flush it as best we can with a water truck.
Got it.
And then you will find plugged culverts. You'll also find areas where the water over tops roadways. Roads aren't, drainage structures aren't built the same way interstate is. So depending upon the use of the roadway, it may only be a five or ten year flood event, is that capacity for that area. We get those. But if we tried to upgrade every roadway to a hundred year flood event or higher, we don't have enough budget overall in the entire county to do that, if even if everyone's budget was given to road and bridge. So we have to, there are going to be times where water does run over the roadways, it's just something that we will fix afterwards. It's just the nature of having a road network the size we do and funding levels. Not that we're underfunded, I don't mean it to seem like that, we're funded appropriately. But our roads are not built to the same standard as interstate system would be.
And then it did touch in here, as far as upgrading roads. You know, if a subdivision wants to do an upgrade, there is somewhat of a path to do so. And I, I've talked to Darren and Neil, I'm working on a flow chart uh, as a present, to present and attach with this, and maybe in our zoning to, to show people on how to, how that all sorts. Kinda simply, do what you did here and simplify directions, so in case people have questions, there's, there's a map, a roadmap.
Like four hundred feet vehicles a day may seem like a lot, but we actually don't have a lot of areas that even hit four hundred vehicles a day, even on some of our paved roads. So that's just your guidance for when it's, you should really consider it, but it doesn't mean it has to be. Hopefully they only got three hundred and eighty vehicles, we're not gonna pave that road here, we shouldn't consider paving it. We have some paved, or unpaved roads that ha- have higher traffic levels too, but the condition of the road and the type of the road suits the use of roadway. Down there at Reservation Road in Canterbury, going east where we have in the budget to potentially pave that or seal that coat that roadway. That roadway was just over four hundred vehicles a day, but if you go all the way to Commerce Parkway, we were at around a hundred vehicles a day. And if you go west on Reservation Road from Canterbury, you're at a hundred and thirty four vehicles a day, according to our recent traffic study. There's a lot of homes over there, but traffic's not taking that way. Only ones that, there's a lot to go to that development, Big Creek Developments, to the east of Canterbury. But they only come back to Canterbury, they go out to Commercees generally.
Got it. And I know you could've made this document as long as you wanted.
I trimmed it down to this though.
Right. When it comes to traffic counts, how, how often do we do that? Do we do it, or do you have a method of where you put them, when you put them to take counts?
Yes and no, we have, the technician also has other duties he has to do. We try not to do it, we try and get a, a good view of the area, so if we do an area during the summertime when there's no school traffic, we will throw it back out again during the school year, just to get an, a closer average. To see if there's additional traffic when school's out, or when school's in place. And with only having the few counters that we have, a lot of times it comes down to us deciding if we're looking at making a road improvement, or we have a concern in the area, that's when we put the counters out. I know the city is, we have the same system as the city has. We've got one computer in the shop, we found that we can actually communicate with those traffic counters now, so it's something in the future we will have to replace, modernize, so it will work with our current upgraded computers.
Gotcha.
We found one that thankfully still had the correct communication port on it. It's not a port that's common, and the adapters cause it to lose sync with the machine, so you can't pull the information off it when you use the adapters, is what we found, we've tried multiple different adapters. Just have to have that computer with that communication port, which is more or less an obsolete port, unless you're in the machining room.
Technology.
Yep. It's advanced, but the problem is it's too fast for the machine, so it loses sync.
Got it. Anybody from the public wanna speak on this topic?
You know, I'm, I'm, I'm Chad Sproul, but I'm new at this, you know, gig here, but what uh, I went and talked to my neighbors, you know, I think seven out of the ten, I think. And a couple of them, which you know, you guys heard the song and dance, you know, some of them said that they can't even go out and sit on their, cause they've turned that road into powder. And uh, the, the, Hevols, I think is how you say their name, they've been there, I think he told me, for thirty some years, or fifty, fifty some years, I think. And he said that him and his wife can't even go outside anymore and sit in the front or the back, because you know, the road's so bad. Uh, the last time they graded it here, two weeks ago or whatever, I mean, you couldn't even see, you know, driving down the road. And we called the county and, you know, I don't know, I, I was gone out of town, I don't know if they kind of watered it or not, but anyway, then all the neighbors I talked to, you know, were game for adding onto their taxes to chip and seal the road. So, I don't know if that's, you know, an option that, you know, we could do to try to do the chip and seal, but we're willing to help pay for that on two hundred and eightieth.
Well, that's kinda the, what I was referring to with the flow chart to, that way we can hand it out to people and show them the directions on how to do it. There is a process that, through these discussions, we've uncovered, there is a petition format to go forth and do that. So it's just a matter of, we wanted to bring in Brendan with these improvements now, well, not really improvements, but road minimums of maintenance, standard maintenance. Try and do our background first and do that, but there is a way to move forward with what you're proposing.
Okay.
So, uh, Darren, did you have?
I was just gonna point out, I think that's a common thing that gets thought, is that the petition is the start of the process. Petition is the ending part of the process, so the petition basically is after the termination of what the landowners wanna do, what type of road surface they wanna add, how much money they wanna spend, how long they wanna spread that out on over tax, tax years. Because when you talk to those ten individuals, you can't expect them to sign a petition not knowing when they're gonna do it, how much it's gonna cost, what type of road it's going to be, so the individuals have to come together and figure out what that is, that's their, their option. They, they need to determine what that is, and then at that point, it comes back to the commission with the petition. There's a lot of work that goes in, in advance to that, and Chad and I have had a couple discussions, and Brendan's got a cost estimate for the amount that it would do to add the double chip, or double seal to that road. Our conversation that Chad and I had was, um, basically to start that conversation, if the commission is open to that process, Brendan would do, he's done, he's explained some of that research, is to the uh, the drainage, but then the, the fiber line and the water line that are over there. The kinda, the next step to that, because those would be potentially on the, on the county side of things, to acquire that right of way, et cetera. Is if the commission wants Brendan to pursue that, find out where the water line's at, and then contact those utilities to see what the estimates are going to be. To get, to gain more right of way, so that way, we're not taxing public out there that is paying for that, that special assessment. We can do the right road the, the first time, instead of with the right amount of right of way. Really no reason to do it now until proper drainage could be done. I'm probably speaking a little outside my lane, but that's, the main concern out there is not having the proper drainage in the right of way. Need to get that fixed before we can put the road on top, the, the road that they're wanting to do on top of it.
Well, you don't wanna put a, have, have you pay for a road and then we, we apply it or install it, and then it's faulty insulation and it doesn't last, we don't wanna see that.
That's why I say that petition is kinda step nine out of ten. At this point, is if the commission would at least, uh, wanna work with Mr. Sproul in that neighborhood, is to uh, have Brendan look at the right of way. Talking to the landowner to gain that right of way on that west side of two eight, uh, two eightieth there. And then getting the utility companies to see what type of cost it's going to be, because those are at this point, uh, not budgeted. If it's gonna cost tens of thousands of dollars to move a water line and fiber lines, I don't, we don't have that built into any budgets in any year to do, to do that work, so. Um, it would take some time to get that built in, or find funds to be able to do that.
I guess the, the first step probably though would be doing an engineering study to see if we even needed widen it and do that. Because that would be, referring to Brendan's stuff, it'd be going in and making earthen drainage. Is that totally necessary, or is there an alternative route, I guess? So we probably would need to do.
And having that survey study, the proper drainage and everything, kinda takes the burden off Brendan's crews a little bit to show that this was actually done properly, this is what's actually needed. Not saying that they don't know that, or can't eyeball it, or go out with, with levels and do such, but having that done kinda helps secure the landowners at the end, when they have the road built, that it's, we're doing things right. Right drainage, right culverts, right ditches to hold the water, et cetera.
Brendan, any idea what a estimate would be on a, just an engineering study and review?
For that, you're probably looking somewhere in the five to ten thousand dollar range for an engineering study and a drainage study on that roadway.
Do you think we'd have that within some of our savings throughout the year that?
We do have a budget line item for engineering that we can utilize if necessary. The issue, the petition that Darren spoke to at the last step, it requires fifty one percent of landowners. You have fifty percent of landowners that don't utilize this road at all, that would be paying for it potentially as well. So with conversations, before we rest with hiring an engineer and spending five, ten thousand dollars, I feel the conversation should be held with that landowner first. If they're not in favor of it, there's no way they can get fifty one percent of the adjoining landowners.
Well, but that would be for, that would be for a top coating.
Correct.
That, that would not, that would not affect us properly engineering the drainage on, on a roadway. Am I correct on?
Fifty one percent, the statute read that fifty one percent of the adjoining landowners need to be in support of the petition.
Which he said he spoke in a seven out of ten preliminary.
But there's that one property owner on the west side, that won't be entirety of the west side.
Right.
That would, would, did that include that one?
I didn't talk to him.
So that would be one of the three out of ten that we don't know.
Yeah.
But, but that would, that would be more or less for top coat, because that's all that petition would address, would be the top surface change.
Yeah, that west landowner would have to at least, that's the primary concern of gaining the right of way and the drainage. And then the easements for the water and the fiber line are on that side as well. So that would be kinda the first step of this, is if that landowner is, is, are they willing to give up more right of way, or for the county to purchase more right of way, to even do the project to begin with.
If it, if it requires that.
Part of that, this statute that explains about the permit, the petition process, is not just top coat, it's about improvements. So it details what mad, mad commodizing, funny sounding word for shaping, improving base work to support a top coat, or to support whether that top coat is sand, rock, or asphalt or concrete. So that, that petition can be either just for the top coat, or it's also written out just for a road improvement like what was done out in Stonewood North.
Gotcha.
That's the mad commodizing process.
Just repacking, reshaping.
Uh, bring an additional aggregate in to construct a true base for a road, not just what's in the area. It says, the statute read for any improvements, mad commodizing, asphalt, concrete, improvements like that, anything from what's already there.
I think we need to reach out to that adjacent landowner and at least have the conversation. Uh, whether, whether he approves, you know, going forward or not, I mean, the, the road is got issues. We have drainage issues, we have, you know, o- on our side, we have problems.
I think Mr. Sproul said, one of the landowners out there knows, those two, that they could in- initiate that conversation potentially just to see what that interest is, or we would get involved in it, might help. Help the conversation a little bit, I, I figured that wouldn't hurt if, if that individual, if they would re- at least reach out and start the conversation and see where they feel, and then uh, Mr. Sproul can report back to me. And then we can continue on from that step.
I mean, I, I would be in favor of going down that route, and at least having that conversation, cause I mean, I can see it not, not getting done now, right, this minute, but we, cause we need to have engineering study done and, you know, follow the proper channels to do it all.
You know, let, let me ask you this, cause I don't deal with farmers, but you know, I'm sure he don't really care if that road gets done or not, you know, since he's the farmer, so what if he says no, you know, I'm not agreeing to anything? Then, you know, that's, that's actually a county road, you know, two eightieth, so what, what, where would the county go from there?
That's the interesting point.
That's a Bill Zuter question, you'd probably have to do some research and follow up with you on?
No, pretty simple answer, the county can condemn the right of way, which would be expensive and time consuming. I don't, I don't know how many feet we'd be talking about, we'd have to have a, a survey done, we'd have to determine a legal description, there'd have to be title work done on who owns the property, who has a mortgage on it, who has any liens, who may have an interest in it. File lawsuit condemning it, court appoints three commissioners, you then can have a hearing and even have testimony and determining what a value is, as to that right of way. And then once that's established and approved by the court, then it's the county's option, do we wanna pay that, or just forget this? If they wanna pay it, the county can pay it in to court and then acquire that right of way. Landowner's not happy with the value, they can still appeal that value, even have a jury trial on it. But that doesn't delay the process, the county would already have acquired the right of way if we, the county would lose a jury trial and have to pay more, then the county would have to pay more. With a, with a right of way that's along farm ground, it's probably not a great value. It may cost more to go through the process than what the right of way actually might be worth. We, we went through a similar process with the Northwest Passageway, so it'd be the same thing. So there'd be attorney fees to do it, there'd be commissioner fees to pay, there'd be a survey that had to be done, so there's got there some fees involved, plus the value of the right of way.
Who could, I just have one more question. Who, who could tell me, like whenever we go start the conversation with the farmer, how much right of way we would need, you know what I mean? Do we need five foot, ten foot, twenty foot?
I think that was the one Brendan was wanting, when we get the engineers involved, they could determine.
So we need the engineers first then?
We need to, I guess we need a preliminary conversation and just to open up the door with the, if we come back and need it, if the farmer be open and willing to work with us.
Okay.
So we need a preliminary farmer going, okay, yes. We'd be willing, i- if it comes back and you need that, we can, we would be willing to work with you. And then, then we go to the engineers and say, okay, what do we actually need?
And as far as an elevation shot, will that cost us a whole lot to at least do that, so we kinda know where we're at, and then what kinda minimum space do you need? Like Mr. Sproul says, it's a county road, we could elevate it. I don't wanna see him spend their money on a, a seal until we get culverts, somewhat of a drainage done.
The elevation and the drainage, that would be something I would contact with an engineering firm to come up with. The thing I would need first is, what does the commission envision of this? Cause a county road is a county road, it can be like Old Forty, it can be like two eightieth, it can be like one of our minimum maintenance roads, that we, that we have, or an open range road. What level are we looking for here, so I can instruct the engineer to design appropriately? Are we looking for a road that handles twenty five year flood events, ten year flood events, five year flood events, hundred year flood events? All of that would change the amount of right of way we would need.
Right.
And the cost for the installation of it. So it would change the size of the drainage structures that would be necessary in there, and it may change the amount of material that we need to bring in, or increase in wide away. What standard are we looking for? Are we looking for county road, a ten year? What standard are we looking for, are we looking for county road, a ten year storm event, if an FAS rail, a twenty-five to fifty or a hundred year storm event? Or a two year storm event, the minimum that we would go with?
I wish I could talk to the guy upstairs, he would let us know.
What you have right now is between a two and a, what you have out there right now is like a two to five year storm event roadway, which is a, that is a county road.
Well, and I guess I look at it from the next standpoint of, you know, we know the direction of development. I mean, it's kinda north and east, and it's all in that corridor, whether it's now or twenty years from now, I don't, I don't know. I guess what is, on the south side of thirteenth, what is that?
The south side of thirteen?
Yeah.
The right of way in there?
Yep.
That should be sixty feet through there.
And we're currently forty-four or forty?
Forty feet north of thirteenth street.
I mean, can you work in that area once, you know, like say, once we get a?
With a two or five year event, I can probably put it in a forty foot, but it's gonna over top. I, I can make anything work. I wouldn't like to do it on that narrow right of way, cause I will not have great ditches, slopes, there'll be steep drop offs and no ditch.
Yeah, that'll be.
So they'll have, you'll have those residents there that will have mosquito ponds along the front of their property. It's what level of service is.
What are we kinda, what is, everything else that we're doing is sixty foot minimums?
Sixty or more.
I mean, I hate to say it, but I think if we're gonna do an upgrade and bring things up to standard, that would be the, the directionality I would look to go.
Like I say, development is going east and north.
The, the engineers will be able to drain, do a drainage study for a twenty-five year storm event. On a sixty foot right of way, is that what the commission is asking me to have them come up with? Cause they, they need guidelines.
They need parameters to work with.
We just tell them make the road better. Not, they're gonna ask a lot more questions, so I'd, I'd like to get it from the three of you here, so I know exactly what we're looking for.
You know, another thing to, and Brendan had mentioned it earlier, we still need fifty-one percent or more of the landowners on either side joining the road, even if we acquire the right of way. So I don't know how that works out on that.
But how does that, how does that necessary, if we just go to, go in to improve the road, improve the drainage in the road as been already reported, as we know we have a problem, we decide to go in and improve the road as is, whether we change the top or not?
I'm not sure I follow.
Well, I mean, so the petition would be to?
Well, the petition would be for the landowners on either side of the road to pay for an improvement.
Right.
And if they don't have fifty-one percent, then any improvement's gonna be paid for by, out of county road bridge funds.
Does the farmer presently use that road or not, does it come off thirteenth?
They come off thirteenth.
Put black on there, he'll probably use it then.
They've got an entrance off of Black Road already.
Right, he'll use the other one. What Bill J, Mr. Jeter was referring to is fifty-one percent is, that's, that's for after the county would obtain the right of way, the drainage study, get the the drain, the flow out, and then if it's a rock road now, it stayed a rock road, the, the assessment would be that they're wanting, is after that is done, is to put the double chip seal over and just pay for that piece of it. Not for the study, not for the drainage, the dirt work.
I guess that's kinda what I was envisioning, we do the background and then they would do the, the upgrade.
Right.
Yeah, cause like you say, right now, you know, like you say, you know, I mean, it needs done regardless, you know, whether we upgrade the road or not, you know, we have a problem.
We, we have a drainage problem, we have a blowing shut problem, we have.
Yeah, like the mosquitoes, you know, not, nothing against him, you know, like the mosquitoes, we have mosquito ponds out there now in the center of the road, you know?
Yeah, I was up there when it rained, I mean, it just.
Yeah, it's the low, the road is the low lying spot or the edges of the road, it's a narrow right of way roadway.
Like you guys, you know, I mean, you guys probably remember, I mean, it gets so bad that the school bus won't even go up and down it, you know, I mean, it, it gets bad.
You know, it's been before your time, but that road years ago was pretty level with thirteenth street, that's how much it has left us.
And we, we've addressed some of that, we brought quite a bit of material in prior to you purchasing that home to shape what we could, but there's not much, there's not much elevation change. So if we built it up too high, then we would start ponding the water on the front of those properties.
What would, Brendan, what, just for knowledge base, what is the drainage, what would the guidelines be, I guess, on the south side of thirteenth? Is that twenty-five year storm event?
Would be similar to that, yes.
Be similar to that, I mean, cause those are, you, also road, those are pretty good sized ditches. I don't know if that would be, if that's what would be required, I mean, that's, that's a lot.
In all likely case, yes.
Cause that, that kinda puts it into perspective of what we're asking them to look at and do.
Which isn't common to see in these developments, because those slopes are hard to maintain with mowers that, for them to mow themselves. I, a lot of the developments are between the two year and the ten year storm events, not the twenty-five year.
Well, if we're only, you said a two to five currently is what you would estimate?
Basically what it is now, we would just need to get the water to go somewhere instead of pulling there.
Okay, so if, if we set a ten, a ten year storm event, that would help, that should help with.
Ten year and sixty foot right of way.
Yeah. That's not going to the full twenty-five of what's on the south.
We'll have that cost for that, I'll absorb that, and then I can present that to, or come up with estimates for the amount of material, like the.
But we need, we'll need, we'll need preliminary, you know,
Numbers.
From the landowner, the, the ag landowner, we'll need preliminary kinda, okay, yeah, i- if, if you come up with a solution, you know, I'd be willing to work with you.
Do you want me to first reach out to the engineer to get, get an estimate for what the road would be for a ten year event? With all the drainage structures we would need to add, for the cost the county will be absorbing, not including the right of way, not including any utility relocation, cause that utility relocation is quite costly.
Yeah, cause that, that east side, you're, you're gonna be limited, we all will know.
Either, either pay the power poles to move, you take some of the frontage from the property owners, or you have the road off alignment with two eighth to the south and shift the road partially to the west, and then relocate water line, in all likelihood, and the fiber and utilities would have to be held out and relocated all the way, but that may be at no cost to the county.
I mean, we can, we can't make any decisions if we have no idea what any of the costs are. I mean, the, the engineering study will be the cheapest portion of the, of the entire project.
So I think the main action items that Mr. Sproul can do for him is to at least have that initial conversation with the landowner or whoever those two individuals could be, and then Brendan will get an estimate on what the, the sur, or the, the study will cost. And then Brendan can contact the two utilities that are known there to see where they're at and how it will impact the right of way acquisition. And then, once we know that, if they're in the right of way or out of the right of way, it'll kinda help determine what those other costs are for utility relocations if needed.
I think that's right.
Report back.
The right of way's gonna be the, at least, the cheapest portion of this whole deal.
Yeah, it'll be the, the utilities.
Right of way is gonna be similar in price to probably what we're gonna pay for the engineering study.
So if we'd have to move real water, you know, next tech, like you say, that may be a forced move, you know, but the, the water, let's say, the water would be in the way and we'd have to pay to help, is that something we could pay for too? You know, if, if we wanted to upgrade the road? If it come to that?
See why not? That would be up to the, that, that would be part of that final petition.
Yep. Oh, there, I just have something to go to the neighbors with, you know, so we potentially may have to move the real water and then do the upgrade.
It's all potential.
What a guy doesn't do to try to get black.
If it was easy, it would've been done a whole time ago.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you.
That, that, doing that's gonna be a big undertaking, it's gonna cut away from doing other roads too, not that it can't be done, but.
Well, and we need to kinda, I guess, have a game plan, cause if there's not a, I mean, there's, there's known problems, I know, we know that, so.
It's up to, the level of county road is up to the three commissioners to give direction on of, you're gonna have issues on roads everywhere, by Commissioner Younger's farm property, we've got a low water crossing where the water goes over. That's still serviceable, and we don't have a bridge there because that's the way the road is.
Right.
We've got open range roads that don't have ditches, that is perfectly serviceable, serviceable for the area, and that's how we've been directed to maintain, we can make it.
Well, what I will say is, not, not, nothing against Mr. Commissioner Younger, but he's not standing here going, I'm willing to work with you.
Yeah, no, I know.
You know, open range roads, you know, they're not here going, hey, we're gonna work with you. Well, when we have people here saying, we're, we're standing here, we're willing to work, I, I think we can at least look at it and entertain it. We've, we've got known problems, and we're, I mean, the people own us.
It is, it is a county road, they occasionally get dusty, they do get wet.
We were actually only out, working with the one farmer on that side then. There's one owner, correct?
I don't know.
Yeah, I just looked, yep, there's just one.
Um, are you talking two eighty? Okay.
West side there, yeah.
Yeah, there's just one parcel owner, I don't know if it's owned by a trust or. I've just done some legwork on the right of way and utilities in the area, approximate locations of some of those things.
But I think without all, I mean, you gave us a lot of generic information, but without getting any specific information, we have no idea where, where this can all go.
Comments, Michael?
Nope, I think we got it.
Moving on, I think, um, county administrator report.
Thank you, Brendan.
Remind the commission, if you do wanna go down and see an update at the admin building. After this is over, we can take another quick walk through and show you what's, what's being done, that's all I got, though.
Nathan?
I did have, I met with, uh, Ruben Shukman, concerns over county firework policy. Something we may put on our work session to at least address the topic a little bit. And then I'm compiling some things to bring forth for our work session in September.
I am too. Neil?
I did, did go to the, uh, Imagine Ellis County. I did bring one thing up on the, uh, used to be the drug courts, now called the recovery call, uh, court. They always look for some of the different places for these people that have to do five hours, ten hours of community stuff, so we were talking about possibly, and that's why I'm bringing it up to the other two commissioners, maybe letting them, uh, go out to the, like to the fairgrounds or also possibly cleaning up some of the ditches, I know it'll probably involve an officer to go with them, but they're, they, they kinda like the idea, and I think so does Northwest Kansas Corrections and Juvenile, they, they like that idea too, just to give them something else to do and instead of going to humane society all the time, just doing the dog and cat stuff, so. And then I did go to the, uh, childcare meeting. We're losing a lot of, a lot of people that are gonna watch kiddos, so look out, it was a big number. I, I was very surprised from that, and I did go watch, uh, another gal graduate for recovery court, so that was interesting, and then I did go to the Hayes Chamber monthly meeting, and we're losing people there too, so my goodness, if somebody knows, if anybody wants to volunteer, it's, it's out there to help our community out, we, uh, all work together, it works great. That and I would like to, uh, thank again the city of Hayes for letting us use this, and also all the support I've gotten over the weekend, so. That's all I have.
Uh, I don't really have much of a port, uh, tomorrow, first day of school, four A's started this week, so, uh, be cautious and watch where you're driving and watch for kids, everybody's excited to get back to school, there's gonna be a lot of traffic and things going on this week, so just have a safe week of school.
I also did go to the first, um, I guess athletic banquet at Fort Hayes in the Coliseum. It was cold in there, all the women were shivering, looking for blankets, but, um, great, great deal, they, they got a little bit of fine tuning, you couldn't hear on the outside perimeters. We're all the silent auction, but that's, uh, that's easy fix, to put some speakers in there, but they had a good, good turnout. Again, people were generous and, uh, good fundraiser for Fort Hayes.
We'll adjourn the meeting at nine thirty-six.